We'll call a meeting to order. Oh, there he is. I know. Councilman Reno, would you lead us in invocation?
Do we have any special intentions? No. Let us begin in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit.
Oh, excuse me. I'd like to pray for the Powell family, for officers Tommy Powell, Senior and Junior, and for the recovery of their son Josh, who is in a very, very, very severe medical situation right now. Let's keep that family in our prayers, please.
Almighty God, who through your only begotten Son, Jesus Christ, overcame death and opened to us the gate of everlasting life, grant that we who celebrate with joy the day of the Lord's resurrection may be raised from the death of sin by your life-giving Spirit through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Councilman Klein, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Our pledge is to declare the flag of the United States of America and to declare it for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum this evening. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones, pagers, beepers, and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Mr. Chairman, this evening I've received a request to amend the agenda to include Item 13F, a resolution of support of the renewal of the Kenner Discovery Health and Sciences Academy Charter, and the continued expansion of the school in the city of Kenner.
Motion by Councilman Impostato, seconded by Councilman Reno to suspend the council rules. All members, please lock in your votes.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0 to suspend your rules.
Motion by Councilman Impostato, seconded by Councilman Reno to amend the agenda to include Item 13F. Anyone in the audience wishing to object, please come forward at this time. Seeing none and seeing no discussion, councilmen, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0 to add Item 13F to your agenda this evening.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda this evening, we have Item 1, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of February 18th, 2016. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2A is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Kenner Italian Heritage Incorporated on April 1st, 2016, April 2nd, 2016, and April 3rd, 2016, at 303 Williams Boulevard, being property owned by the City of Kenner in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 1909-15, Jonathan Hastings and Sabrina Carrero to hold a public gathering on June 11th, 2016, from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM for the purpose of a wedding ceremony and second-line van at Rivertown in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3B is application number 1929-16, Pilgrim Baptist Church, to hold a public gathering on March 26th, 2016, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM for the purpose of a Easter picnic at Veterans Park in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3C is application number 1933-16, Helldiver Spear Fishing Club, to hold a public gathering on June 5th, 2016, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM for the purpose of an award ceremony at Kenner City Park Pavilion in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3D is application number 1934-16, St. Jerome Church, to hold a public gathering on March 25th, 2016, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM for the purpose of a Good Friday Outdoor Way of the Cross procession through the streets of Highway Park Subdivision in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3E is application number 1935-16, Metairie Humane, to hold a public gathering on March 19th, 2016, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM for the purpose of a fundraiser at Veterans Park in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3F is application number 1936-16, City of Kenner Parks and Recreation, to hold a public gathering on March 19th, 2016, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM for the purpose of a craft market at the Exhibition Hall parking lot. Item 3G is application number 1937-16, Italian Heritage 501-C3, to hold a public gathering on April 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, 2016, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the purpose of a festival in Rivertown. Item 3H is application number 1938-16, Our Lady of Perpetual Health Church, to hold a public gathering on March 27th, 2016, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM for an Easter Sunrise service at La Salle's Landing. Item 3I is application number 1939-16, the City of Kenner, to hold a public gathering on April 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th of 2016, from 8:30 AM to 10:00 PM for an AVP tour event at Lake Town. Item 3J is application number 1940-16, the City of Kenner, to hold a public gathering on May 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, 2016, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM for Music in the Park at Heritage Park. Item 3K is application number 1941-16, the City of Kenner, to hold a public gathering on May 7th, 14th, 21st, 28th, 2016, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM for Movies in the Park at Heritage Park. Item 3L is application number 1942-16, the Treasure Chest Casino, to hold a public gathering on March 18th, 2016, April 1st, 2016, April 15th, 2016, from 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM for a crawfish ball on the lake at the Treasure Chest Casino. Item 4 is correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, and department heads. Item 4A, at the request of the administration, Ms. Annalisa Kelly of JEDCO, with a presentation to update economic development activities for the year of 2015 and a brief update on 2016.
Ms. Kelly?
Does she have a...
Hold on.
No. Not. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Well, thank you all for including my presentation on the council agenda tonight. My name is Annalisa Kelly with JEDCO, the Jefferson Parish Economic Development Commission. I'll just wait until we get that up on the screen. Sorry about that. But I'm here with Lacy Bordelon, JEDCO's deputy director as well. Okay, great. Well, thanks again. Our purpose for coming here tonight is to provide highlights of our 2015 annual report for our business retention and expansion program for the city of Kenner. Each of you, I believe, should have a copy of that report. Please feel free to review it at your leisure and ask me any questions anytime. So some background, as many of you know, we have a cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Kenner. We've had it now for, this is, I believe, the seventh year of the partnership. Under this agreement, we're tasked with providing economic development services to the city of Kenner. And the primary way we do this, there's a large set of deliverables, but the main one is our business retention and expansion program. And that really focuses on meeting with existing businesses in Kenner, because we firmly believe that it's the existing businesses. They're the ones that are hiring people, expanding, so we really make it our mission to meet with existing businesses, see how they're doing, and how we can assist them. So in 2015, we contacted 161 Kenner companies through direct outreach, meaning phone calls, emails, in-person conversations, and then had one-to-one sit-down meetings with 41 Kenner companies separate from any other meetings. In addition to that, we sent several hundred letters to Kenner companies, letting them know about JEDCO services, as well as letters to every manufacturer in Kenner, letting them know of important deadlines for manufacturing incentives. We specifically targeted the top economic drivers of Kenner, manufacturers, top employers, but also this past, the latter half of 2015 going into 2016, we targeted businesses that are in the Bainbridge and Crestview areas that could be impacted by the airport's expansion, and that is certainly continuing into 2016 as well. So when we sit down with a business leader, we have an end-up conversation about how they're doing, their sales, their revenues, their employment numbers, and then we use that to kind of give a picture of Kenner businesses overall. Not all businesses will answer every question. Sometimes they don't know the info, sometimes they don't wish to report on something, but for those answers we did get, I've put them together in this presentation for you tonight to kind of see a general picture anonymously of the businesses that we met with in the past year. So it got a little off on that screen, but if you'll see, the primary business markets of the businesses we met with, they were primarily local, serving the greater New Orleans area and surrounding parishes, and then regional, meaning neighboring states and Louisiana overall, then national, then international. The majority of businesses we met with were small businesses, 1 to 50 employees, but we also met with businesses that were several hundred employees. 10% of the businesses we met with were over 200 employees. And on that note, we'll meet with any size. You know, I met last year with a small startup company with one employee, and then several companies with hundreds of employees, but if you're a business that needs help, regardless of your size, we'll meet with you. So the industry breakdown, again, the majority of the companies we met with were manufacturers, but we also met in 2015 with a good deal of retail companies, the Esplanade Mall and Rivertown specifically, followed by construction and transportation and warehousing and healthcare. Again, that got a little off, unfortunately, but the facilities breakdown, basically the majority of companies we met with, they had single-location businesses, followed by headquarters and regional headquarters, and then branch operations. And also, the majority of companies owned their buildings, 62% versus 38% leasing, which is a good thing. You know, if a business owns their building, they're more stable most likely, and if you're a manufacturer and you own your building, you can get incentives for property taxes for any improvements you make to that building. So some good news, the vast majority of the companies we surveyed in 2015 had increasing or stable sales and predicted sales to increase or be stable over the next two years. And then a reflection of the fact that they're doing well is that 70% of them were either planning expansions or considering expansions within three years. And the next slide will show of the ones that have definitive report plans to expand, this is kind of the dollar amounts. And this is not everything, because not everyone had exact dollar amounts yet, but almost $8 million total investment, 123 jobs to be created, and over 100,000 square feet of building space. And that's just the companies that are in Kenner already. It doesn't include any new companies moving to Kenner, such as the Gateway Apartments or the NFL Living Facility, Memory Care Center, or the new At Home Store. Some really good news, none of the companies I met with last year anticipated layoffs, and 80% of them had increased their employment over the last two years. That was really great news. And then when we meet with a company, we'll ask them, just in general, some qualitative information, you know, what are the strengths and weaknesses of the area of Kenner? So I'll just kind of go through some of the things we heard repeatedly or, you know, strongly. The strengths, businesses specifically mentioned location as being both a strength and a weakness, saying the proximity to the airport and to I-10, 310 veterans, river parishes, New Orleans, that was a strength. But then a few businesses, especially in some of the business parks, said that it was perceived as being far away from New Orleans and hard to get to. Something we've heard year after year is strong community ties. A lot of the businesses I met with, especially small businesses, the owners grew up in Kenner, they live in Kenner, they feel very, very strong ties to the community. On that related note, they also mentioned that Kenner was very, very business-friendly, very responsive government, very responsive leadership in City Hall, excellent police and fire departments, we've heard that in the past as well. And then I heard the kind of mixed things from code enforcement, mostly very impressed about their speed and responsiveness to issues. I did hear a couple companies saying that they weren't sure if violators were being, maybe the citations weren't effective. And then another strength I heard a lot was Kenner had a lot of development opportunities, the airport buyout properties, some of the vacant land, Rivertown, Lake Town, and that the new airport was seen as a positive driver, you know, to spur on that development. Some weaknesses I heard, and the first one on this list, I think, I'll hear, we'll hear more of it as the construction continues, but there were concerns about how the new airport construction, the North Terminal, could affect business operations. I heard some comments about unappealing signage on Williams, although once we talked about the new Unified Development Code in Kenner 2030, they were very excited about that. I heard some drainage concerns on Industry Road, although it was great to hear that that's already being looked at, so that's wonderful. Some traffic signaling issues on veterans, which again, I think is being looked at as part of the new access for the airport. And then I did hear from Rivertown prospects that, or real estate developers as well, that it was not clear how to engage with leasing and buying property in Rivertown, so I'd like to kind of look at that in the next few months. So the things that we assist with to businesses, you know, our points of assistance, this is what we did in 2015, guidance on tax incentives, which I'll go into a little more detail in the next couple slides. Site searches, so if a business is expanding or moving into the city, we'll help them find a location. Issue resolution, just if they are having issues in some way or another that needs our assistance, we'll step in. Financing, we approved a loan to a business that was expanding in Kenner in 2015, and actually, we just approved another one, so I'm glad to say that, and there are a few more in the pipeline, I believe. We refer people to small business, to, sorry, we refer people for business plan creation. And then demographics and marketing support, we nominated two Kenner companies for awards, and they received those awards, the Lantern Award and the Small Business of the Year Award. And we did a lot of work gathering information about airport buyout properties and the North Terminal project. So of those tax incentives, there were six different, six companies either moving to Kenner or in Kenner already that enrolled in state tax incentive programs for their capital projects with a $28 million total investment. And we worked very closely with these companies to, in one case, actually, it was, they weren't going to move forward with the project, but once we helped them with quality jobs, they were able to move forward. So that was a great success story this past year. Site searches, we conducted site searches for 19 companies. Most of them were for retail or commercial sites, and then office, industrial, and vacant land were all tied after retail. And actually, sorry, going back to that, one of those site searches was the NFL Assistant Living Facility, and that came about from a retention visit with St. Teresa, so it all kind of came together full circle, and it was a great success for our site search program. And then finally, this is something we do every year, we updated our 2016 Kenner Economic Development Profile, and we also maintained a new specialized highlights packet for business recruitment, you know, instead of sending a larger packet, we created a tailored, smaller version of it to send to major prospects. We also maintain our Business Resource Guide for starting a business in Kenner. I just, yesterday, I think, restocked a few of the offices, but if you ever see them getting low, just send me an email or call me, and I can come by and bring more. And then in general, beyond our business retention program, we do support Kenner 2030 activities. In 2015, we worked with the City of Kenner in planning and marketing for the Lake Town development, hosting a webpage about the RFP, identifying a variety of comparable developments across the country. We were an active member in the mayor's Economic Development Committee and subcommittees, worked very closely with the Esplanade Mall on a few things. I'm a member of the Rivertown Main Street Association Board, which became more active in 2015, and then helped a lot of businesses with the airport buyout properties and maintained a webpage on those on our website. And then finally, just a quick look at 2016 so far, we've met with nine businesses to date, ranging from food manufacturers to software developer, a new software developer on veterans, it's a really interesting company. We helped with the airport buyout property auction, that's still ongoing. We've done some incentive assistance, held the business outreach meeting for the North Terminal, and we're working with a few prospects considering the area. Oh, and Kenner Star article, I did miss that last one, we just wrote a Kenner Star article for the, about the airport buyout properties. Anyway, thank you. I always try and keep it short, but it ends up going very long, but thank you for your time. As always, if you have businesses in your district that you know of that could benefit from meeting with us, please, as always, let me know. We stand ready to assist however we can, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Annalisa, I'll start, and I just want to thank you for your direct effort and your labor. I've personally experienced your attentiveness and your effort and perseverance to help businesses, certainly in District 5, but across the city of Kenner, you know, every person I've referred to, you jump on top of immediately and work hard to get them the assistance they need, including, interestingly enough, it's kind of funny you're here tonight, we have coming up a PUD application for a business that I'm optimistic will get approved tonight, we'll see, but I'm optimistic about, that I referred to you, and within, literally within seconds, you reached out to the Kognviches and a new, very successful business, well, a very successful business that is hoping to move into the city of Kenner, and so I watched you at work, and it's wonderful, and I appreciate it, your effort, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm very hopeful about that new business as well.
Councilman Carroll, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Ms. Kelly, also to echo the comments of Councilman Impostado, for yourself, Ms. Bordelon, and also the JEDCO Department for the support up to this point for the new terminal, the North Terminal, at the Louis Armstrong/Moyezant International Airport. The two meetings that you guys participated in for the businesses and also for the property owners and the citizens that live and have their businesses, you know, did a great job coordinating it, helped support the people, helped facilitate the questions during the meetings, so we, you know, that was good. And people felt that the people who attended, that their questions were not ignored, and you were able to support that throughout for JEDCO, so that was fantastic. Speaking about the North Terminal, there was, there's a couple of questions, people keep calling my office, and you may not have it today, but if you could assist me with that. The airport is the City of New Orleans project, they happen to be in the city of Kenner, a lot of the employment opportunities are being funneled through the city of New Orleans at their New Orleans Employment Office, which isn't that bad or far for people who have vehicles. Have we done anything, are we planning to do anything maybe to support something in Jefferson Parish to be able to help people who are challenged with transportation and who may not have access to the internet, because they also could do it on the internet, but is there anything in the works, or maybe there was something that we can do to support that activity?
That's a really good question. First, thank you, but I know, you know, I went to the aviation board meeting today, and Ashley Gardaire was there, she is kind of heading up a lot of the workforce development concerns for the city of New Orleans overall, but in particular, this airport project, since it's bringing so many jobs. I know the CMA, the construction managers at risk are looking at having RTA connection to the airport specifically for this project, and they're still not sure about it, but as far as transportation goes, I'd be very, I think it would be good to see what their plans are, and maybe if there are ways, if they're looking at RTA, maybe there are ways to pull in Jefferson Parish transit, but I don't know, but I'd be happy to talk to them about it and see, and talk to you as well, see if there are any opportunities to bring in Jefferson Parish workers.
Yeah, not only myself, but for all of us, if you, I would like for you to look into that and see, they may be able to offer some type of bus route or special transportation for people who need to be able to get there, if it's going to only be in the city of New Orleans to actually fill out applications as opposed to the internet. So yes, I would appreciate that. And also, my last question, you know, you and I had talked at the end of last year about putting on some type of seminar, particularly for the small businesses and small, small businesses in District 1, some opportunities, because I think sometimes people, for the lack of knowledge and knowing how they can either expand their businesses or expand their sales, they're a little tentative, because they're a little afraid to ask questions, thinking that it may bring about something negative. So I haven't forgotten about that, and thanks again for your support. Within the next couple of months, I think I'll have something in place where you will be able to assist to attract some of those small, small businesses, and also for young men and women who would like to start their business, but they really don't have a clue about how they're going forward, so those two things, you know, as we talked about before, I look forward to getting together with you to be able to have that in the city of Kenner.
Sure, and just on that note, we currently have a monthly seminar series called Prosper Jefferson, just for everyone's knowledge, and it kind of, it's free workshops that touch on a number of different topics for small businesses, but it is held on the West Bank. I would love to talk to you maybe about having something comparable in Kenner, so...
Yes, and if you could just email me that schedule and some of the information and literature that you guys address in these small seminars, I would appreciate that, and be able to look at that and to be able to try to format something for the city of Kenner.
Sure.
Well, thanks again, and thanks for all your support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Francis.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I was going to mention something, but Councilman Carroll already mentioned it, and that was the great job you did in putting together a meeting for the businesses that were going to be impacted by the new airport, the move of the airport from its original site to the new site on the north side, and you did a great job on that, and I just wanted to compliment you. But the other one is to thank you for working with me on a project you and I have been working on for almost a year and a half to try to get some more publicity for some of our businesses and malls in this area, so we need to continue working together, I think we can make it come to fruition, and thank you for your help.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Skier, you have the floor.
Thank you. First off, on behalf of the administration, I want to certainly thank JEDCO, Annalisa, for her hard work in always promoting the city, and I think it goes a long way to say that the arrangement that we have with JEDCO to be our economic development arm is proven to be a good investment and something that we definitely want to continue in the future with. As the Councilman for District 2, I want to also comment that a piece of city property on Williams Boulevard that was determined the city no longer wanted, and due to the advertisement that JEDCO made on our behalf to notify people that it was available, has brought in four interested people within a very short span of time that we are working through sorting out which project will be the best for that property. So it does work, and we thank them for their assistance.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
All right, well, thank you again.
Mr. Chairman, that will conclude your consent agenda tonight. However, let me clarify that under the approval of minutes, you are approving the March 3rd, 2016, meeting, so we can send it to a vote now. Motion in the second by Councilmember DeFrances, second by Reno, to approve the consent agenda.
Correct. Motion by Councilman DeFrances, seconded by Councilman Reno. Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0 on your consent tonight. Under the public appearance agenda, we have Item 9, public hearings for final passage. Item 9A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 11,990, in order to amending Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kenner, Louisiana, to enact Article 6, problematic properties relative to prohibiting problematic properties and providing penalties for the violation thereof and providing for related matters.
Before we begin this portion of the agenda, I'm going to say this once, so that way we can avoid the repetition. For Items 9, A, B, C, and D, this is the public appearance part of the agenda, so members of the public on each of these items, please feel free to come forward and be heard. So I just want to let you know, this is certainly...
So, I just want to let you know, this is certainly an opportunity on each of those items as they come up. Feel free to come forward and speak on any one of those items as you so desire. I will announce as they come up. Item Nine A, before we begin, Councilman DeFrances has asked the floor, which I shall give to her.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, please get a motion in a second to open our hearing.
Motion by Councilman Empistata, seconded by Councilman Rayno to open public hearing. Councilman DeFrances? Hold on. Yeah, before we do that, Councilman DeFrances would like to address the floor. I'll give it to you. Hold on. You got it now?
Yes. Thank you. I will be recusing myself from voting on Nine A in order to avoid even the semblance of a conflict of interest, so I'm asking for a recusal on Nine A.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Empistata, seconded by Councilman Rayno to open public hearing on Item Nine A. Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I could clarify, please. Councilman Carroll, did you vote for it? Councilman Empistata, did you vote for it?
I did.
Councilman Brennan, did you vote for it?
Yes.
Councilman Rayno, did you vote for it? Councilman Klein, did you vote for it?
I'm not going to vote for it, but I'll see you tomorrow.
That's okay. Mr. Chairman, motion passes five-zero. Councilmember DeFrances is abstaining tonight.
Is recusing. It's fine.
You're now in a public hearing.
We're now in a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on Item Nine A for problematic properties, please come forward and be heard. Seeing none, motion by Councilman Empistata, seconded by Councilman Rayno to close public hearing. Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Empistata, seconded by Councilman Rayno to approve Item Nine A. As this is, this is an item that I've been working on for a couple of years, I'd like to open and discuss its import. This, what this ordinance is intended to do is to address blight in the city of Kenner directly as it relates to rental properties. What we have identified throughout, particularly District Five, which is the district that I represent, but in speaking to my colleagues, it appears that this is an issue that does cross every district in the city of Kenner. Problematic properties that have been perpetual violators of our codes and that present problems in the city of Kenner unfortunately happen to often be rental properties. And we've noticed that within our code department for the last couple of years. And one of the challenges is that oftentimes the tenants, the renters, who are the ones who are usually cited and called to answer for those violations, by the time they go through our code process, by the time they are called for hearing, oftentimes, they're then gone. And then, once they're gone, they, where the violators, will then, unfortunately, oftentimes we have people replace them in those same rental properties who then are of like conduct. And so, unfortunately, at that point, many of the landlords don't have the incentive to help us keep our codes followed, our laws followed, and are not answerable for the conduct of the people that they put in these properties. So, what this does is this says the landlords will be answerable for the conduct of their tenants to the city of Kenner. They can avoid that. They're not forced to be fined or sanctioned in any way if they can show to the code court and to the code office that they are taking actions to get rid of those problematic tenants. So, we think this is good government legislation. This is a real positive move. I want to thank Renee Aguilar, who has joined the city attorney's office. She's actually been working on this with me for two years, most of which she was at the parish attorney's office. And we modeled this legislation after a couple of different jurisdictions who have done this and have seen very positive results because it basically tells the landlords, "Look, we see a lot of positive," and believe it or not, we have a lot of really good rental properties in the city of Kenner. You can look at a lot of them that are very well maintained, very kept up with good tenants. They police themselves. They do the work, and they make sure that their people are accountable, and this is what we're trying to do on a citywide basis. So, that's why I'm asking my colleagues to support this and vote for its approval. So, seeing no other requests to speak, councilman, please vote. What's that? Calling for a vote. Yeah, we call for a vote.
I'm going to clear your votes, sir, and we have a motion to amend that we need to entertain before we vote on approval. If we could, please. So, I'm going to clear this vote.
All right, thank you.
And then, we're going to go back and we're going to, I'm going to read in an amendment that I've received from the legal department. If you could give me one second, please. We are going to amend in this legislation, we will do this in globa with one motion. If we could, please, we are going to, in Section One, we're going to insert rental between problematic and properties in five locations. Article Six, Section Five dash two-eleven A, Section Five dash two-eleven B, and Section Five dash two-twelve, and Section Five dash two-thirteen. Then we will add the words that it is leased, rented, or otherwise occupied by someone other than the owner of the property to the problematic rental property definition in Section Five dash two-twelve. And then, we will change the first sentence of the penalty provision in Section Five dash two-fifteen to read, "It shall be unlawful for any person, owner, or occupant to violate or fail to comply with any provision of this article, and the violation of or failure to comply with any provision of this article shall be punished as provided in Section One dash Nine of this code." So, if everyone is okay with this amendment that we've proposed, we'll vote on it in globa.
Motion by Councilman Rayno, seconded by Councilman Empistata on the amendment. Councilman Carroll, you've requested the floor. Councilman Rayno, do you wish to open on the amendment?
Yeah, I just want, and thank you, Mr. President, and I'm glad I was given the opportunity with that little setback. This information that is new for all of us here today, are we going to be able to put this information on the Kenner website or possibly, because it's new for the property owners also, is there a way for them to?
Oh, the new ordinance, you mean?
Yes, sir, the new ordinance. For the property owners, this is new for them. So, are we going to try to maybe, I'm not sure how costly that would be, but mail them something or put it at least at a minimum on our website so they know now the laws have changed and they will now be held responsible along, you know, which they should have been in the beginning, they should have known that, but now it's official. Is there a way for us to do that? And if there, is anyone here from IT to answer that question about putting it on the Kenner website?
Councilman Skier, do you wish to address that?
That's simple. I think we can easily do that.
Okay.
At the very least, we can do that.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Quigley. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, councilman, please vote on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes five-zero to amend. Now, we will go back to our original motion to, on approval, if we could, please.
Motion by Councilman Empistata, seconded by Councilman Rayno to approve the legislation
Mr. Chairman, motion passes.
Wait, Brian.
Five-zero.
Can we call for an oral vote?
Councilmember Brennan, would you like to, are you voting in favor?
Can we call for an oral vote?
Okay. If everyone could please state their vote. Councilman Carroll? Councilman Empistata?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan? Mr. Chairman, motion passes five-zero. Item Nine B is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,009 and an ordinance approving a planned unit development for Stone Interior New Orleans LLC for the development of a stone countertop, tile showroom, and fabrication facility and Creative Graphics Incorporated, an industrial engraving sign, award, and promotion company on Lot L-1 Oakland Plantation Subdivision, Kenner, Louisiana.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Brennan to open public hearing. Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six-zero.
Again, this is public appearance part of the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to address the council on Item Nine B?
Thank you.
Mr. Abear.
Thank you, Council President. The property is owned by Zaps 121 LLC of Dusterhan, Louisiana. The applicant is Kenneth John Kognovich Jr., who is the owner of Stone Interiors New Orleans in St. Rose, Louisiana. Lot L-1 consists of approximately 138,000 square feet. It fronts the south side of Airline Drive and is located in Council District One. The property is owned SI Special Industrial. The area surrounding the site contains a mixture of commercial and industrial uses. HNE Equipment Services is located adjacent to the east, while Pet Paradise is located adjacent to the west. The planned unit development will consist of two phases. Phase one will include the new construction of an 8,200-square-foot showroom and office building, along with a fenced stone slab garden and a slab yard.
Where's that legislation at?
Phase two includes a new construction of an 8,000-square-foot stone countertop fabrication and engraving building. There will be one vehicular entrance point to the site from Airline Drive. The buildings within the development site have been determined to meet the minimum area regulations and setbacks of the respective district. Site plan also shows a new seven-foot-high security fence along the rear property line and along portions of the side property lines. The new fencing will tie into the existing fencing located along portions of the side property lines. Site plan also shows a five-foot-high wrought iron fence located around a slab garden. Now, the fence does encroach approximately 10 feet into the required 20-foot front yard area. With regards to off-street parking, a minimum of 47 parking spaces are required. The applicant is providing 57. With regards to landscape and buffering, the landscape plan has been determined to meet the city's landscaping requirements. The plan will incorporate eight red maple trees, 13 shu-mort oak trees, 41 Indian hawthorns, and 22 juniper trees located around, in and around the development. With regards to proposed signage, the attached building signs with total 90 square feet in size, the maximum square footage that's allowed in the district is 250 square feet, so it falls far below. With regards to the detached sign, 123-foot tall detached sign is proposed at the northeast corner of the site, front of Airline Drive. The sign will measure 108 square feet in size and meets the total sign area and height limit of the district. With regards to utilities, utility companies have indicated that there are public utilities in the area available to provide service to the proposed development. Now, AT&amp;T and Entergy do have facilities on the property and do require continued access to the facilities for maintenance purposes. The applicant is aware of this request. The proposed development is consistent with the city's future land use plan as being conducive for commercial and light industrial use, and on February 24, the Planning Commission recommended approval.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Brennan to close public hearing. Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six-zero.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Brennan to approve. Councilman Carroll, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask if Mr. or Mrs. or anyone from the family of the Kognoviches here or anyone from Zap to please come up. You know, a lot of times we don't recognize you or thank you for this, and I'd like for you to come up, you know, give your name, address, and some information about the store as far as who will it be servicing and maybe a proposed start date for us, sir. Thank you.
Hello? I'm Kenneth John Kognovich Jr. at 124 Midway Drive, River Ridge, Louisiana. And basically, the companies, the graphic company's been in existence for 30 years, 35 years. The stone fabrication facility is about 10 years old. We're located in James Business Park right now with the fabrication shop and the showroom, and we're looking to expand somewhere nearby. We need more property to do that. We're looking to open up a little bit more of a retail environment to what we sell for basically installing granite countertops. We provide that service around the whole Gulf South Louisiana. We service basically from Jackson, Mississippi, to Lake Charles, to the Biloxi, Mississippi. And so, we're fabricating that facility. So, we'll probably be starting construction, I would think, you know, within the next year. We're planning on basically starting the construction on the slab garden pretty soon, and I guess the building would be probably within a year, we'll be starting the building for sure.
Great. Would there be any additional employment opportunities for anyone during the expansion? Or have you guys considered that?
Yeah, we do continue to grow. So, one business has about 28 employees, the stone shop, the graphic company. I think we have about eight, and we are continuing to grow. So, that's why to do that, we needed a little bit more land, and we think that this would be a good fit for us.
Well, thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Abear and your department for the support again for this, and you know, thank you for having the confidence in the city of Kenner to grow your business and, you know, wish you all the luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks also to Empistata and also for Jetco, had stopped by and your recommendation. I appreciate that also.
Absolutely.
Annalisa, thank you.
Well, with the reputation y'all's business has, we're glad to have you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Brennan to approve.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six-zero. Item Nine C is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,010 and ordinance amending the 2008, 2009, and 2011, 2012 capital budgets to reallocate $90,000 from match for Loyola Drive and I-10 interchange and $10,000 from the Veterans Boulevard resurfacing Loyola Drive to Virginia to resurfacing Loyola Drive northbound, I-10 to 31st Street.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman DeFrances to open public hearing. Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six-zero.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on Item Nine C of the agenda? Mr. Abear, do you have a presentation on this one?
No.
No. Seeing no one, motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman DeFrances to close public hearing. Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six-zero.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman DeFrances to approve Item Nine Seeing no discussion, councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six-zero. Item Nine D is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,011. An ordinance accepting the award of fiscal year 2015 Emergency Solutions Grant funding in the amount of $56,650 by the Louisiana Housing Corporation and amending the fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget to allocate said funding for the Department of Community Development.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Klein to open public hearing. Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six-zero.
Ms. Terrell, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, basically just an explanation and disclosure for the public. This is a discretionary grant that the department and the city has applied for several years, and we've been successful in being awarded these funds. These funds allow us to provide programs and services at our resource centers primarily to help families that are in need of assistance from becoming homeless and helping the homeless. And so, I'm available for any questions and ask your support. Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on Item Nine D? Seeing none, motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Klein to close public hearing. Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six-zero.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Klein to approve Item Nine D. Councilman Carroll, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Terrell pretty much answered most of my questions, and, you know, if there's anything else that you would like to add, Ms. Terrell, please.
No.
That was it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six-zero. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. Item 11 A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 11,994 and ordinance rescinding Appendix A, zoning of the Kenner Code of Ordinances, more specifically, ordinance number 2427, the City of Kenner Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance adopted December 4, 1978, and adopting and replacing it with a new City of Kenner Unified Development adopting and replacing it with a new City of Kenner Unified Development Code that Chapter 14 subdivisions of the Code of Ordinances City of Kenner adopted August 14th, 1972 shall be repealed and reenacted in Article 13 of the new City of Kenner Unified Development Code that Chapter 10, Article 7, group homes and community homes of the Code of Ordinances City of Kenner adopted August 14th, 1972 shall be repealed and reenacted in Article 7 of the new, I'm sorry, Article 12 of the new City of Kenner Unified Development Code that Chapter 2, Article 3, Planning Commission and Zoning Commission of the Code of Ordinances City of Kenner adopted August 14th, 1972 shall be repealed and reenacted in Article 4 of the new City of Kenner Unified Development Code and directing, authorizing, and empowering the planning director to alter and amend the official zoning map of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, and related matters.
Motion by Councilman DeFrances, seconded by Councilman Brennan to open public hearing. Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six zero to open your hearing.
Mr. Abear, I'm sure you have a presentation.
Thank you, Council President. I guess, but the best place to start would be to provide some background on this project to help explain how we got to this point in time. Back in 2010, the state opened up with a, a new pilot program. It's a $10 million comprehensive resiliency program. It was to provide assistance to coastal communities in Louisiana that were impacted by Hurricanes Gustav and Ike. These are non-construction funds. These go to local communities in terms of being more resilient with regards to land use and zoning. We applied for the grant. We were awarded $238,000 for two things. First was to create a comprehensive plan for the city to be used as a blueprint or a guide for future development. That was approved by the Planning Commission back in April of 2015. The second part of the project was to create a new set of zoning regulations to replace our current CZO, which was last adopted by the city council in 1978. So, as I just indicated, phase one, it was adopted by our Planning Commission last month, and of course, it's up with regards to Unified Development Code. It is up pending council action tonight. This was a partnership between the University of New Orleans Division, UNO's Planning Services, and the City of Kenner, which also included the mayor's office, the city council, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Planning Department. We also corresponded with the city attorney's office, the Department of Inspection and Code Enforcement, and the Department of Public Works. As part of our community outreach, we did provide presentations and have question-and-answer sessions with the Economic Development Committee, former mayor Mike Guineys. We also met numerously with the Kenner Code Advisory Committee. We coordinated throughout this project with Jedco, Lacy, and Alisa. We provided presentations to the Rivertown Historic Commission, the Kenner Business Association, and the Rivertown Historic Redevelopment Association. Most important, though, were the citizen participation meetings that we had with the residents of Kenner. Before the draft was put together, we held five city-wide citizen participation meetings to gather input on various issues that were affecting our residents. Once we obtained the information, and those were held actually back in July of 2015, once we obtained the information, we then formulated the draft of the UDC with the assistance of UNO. We posted a copy of the draft on the city's website in September 2015, and then shortly after that, we had two more citywide meetings with the citizens to get impact, to get information and input from them with regards to the draft. Back on January 24th of this year, the Planning Commission, it went before the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval. So, with regards to why Unified Development Code, as indicated earlier, ours was last adopted in 1978. It has over 130 revisions made to it since then. Many of those provisions were carried over from the 1972 CZO. To give you an example, the regulations for our planned unit developments, that comes from the city's 1972 CZO. It's extremely outdated where you, when you compare our regulations to those regulations of our neighbors and also a cross-section of the country. Many of the provisions are confusing. They contradict one another. They're, they create a situation where you can have multiple interpretations of those provisions. So, those are a few examples as to why. Not to mention that also, we got outdated procedures. So, what we're proposing to do is to take our regulations, zoning regulations from our CZO and our subdivision regulations that are found in the City of Kenner's Code of Ordinances, it's two different documents. Take those regulations and put them into one document to make it a little bit more simplified for our residents. With regards to the organization of the UDC, it'll be broken down into 16 articles. Each will address specific issues with regards to zoning. It'll also include numerous illustrations and tables, which is lacking with our current CZO right now, and it'll also include our application fees as well. Also, new, we're increasing the number of definitions to 428 compared to 188 right now. That may not seem that important, but when you're trying to define a use, oftentimes the definition of a use will determine whether or not a business or a use is allowed or not allowed in a specific zoning district. Another new feature, and we're actually borrowing and modeling this from the City of New Orleans, is an early neighborhood notice procedure. Prior to the submitted applications such as rezonings, planned unit developments, and conditional uses, it will be required that the applicant actually have a meeting, at least one meeting with the residents, the business owners or property owners that live in that neighborhood. That way, the residents won't feel like they've been hit blindside. Often, it's a situation, and there's, sometimes with our department as well, there's been no communication or interaction with the applicant up until the time they submit the application. So, we're kind of caught off guard as well, and then we sit out notices for Planning Commission meetings, they go out to the residents, and then the residents contact us complaining that they haven't had enough time to review this. So, we think that this will curb those issues. Also new, design guidelines for the Rivertown Historic Commission. Back in the late part of 2014, we contracted with Tulane University's Regional Urban Design Center to create and recommend design guidelines for our historic district. When they created the district back in 1983, they provided absolutely no design guidelines, and unfortunately, for our commission members, they're often reluctant to deny an application due to the fact that they have no design guidelines to fall back on and support of. So, we think, and then also, it provides, it benefits the applicants as well because they know going in how they need to design these, these structures. Another new feature with regards to off-street parking, the parking ratios for retail commercial uses. Currently, it's one parking space for every 200 square feet of Rose floor area. We're recommending that it be increased to 300 square feet, and that's really being consistent with other municipalities. Newer parking regulations seem to be going along those ratios. The majority of a development site consists of the parking area, and I'd say on average from our studies, one-third of a parking lot will be full throughout a one-year period. Also, we're recommending that the ratio for hotels, parking spaces, be reduced from 1.5 spaces per room to one space per room, and that's going along with the hotel industry's guidelines. Also, we're addressing the storage of commercial and recreational vehicles. Our current CZO does not address recreational vehicles. It addresses camp and recreation equipment, but there's absolutely no regulations when it comes to recreational vehicles. So, that was one of the big issues we've heard from both sides, recreation vehicle owners as well as neighbors who happen to live in those neighborhoods where there are those vehicles.
What are we talking about there, Mr. Abear?
I'm sorry?
Recreational vehicles.
Yes.
What do you mean?
Boats, RVs, motor vehicles.
Thank you.
Another new feature would be with regards to our sign regulations. Our sign regulations will include illustration, illustrations and diagrams to go along with the definitions, to get a better understanding as to what we're talking about when it comes to certain types of signs. We're also providing a three-year amortization period for business owners who have invested recently in signs, so that the regulations won't take place immediately. We'll give them time to come into compliance within a three-year period. We're also recommending with regards to detached pylon signs, or detached signs in general, we're recommending that businesses switch or opt to a monument-type sign. And the reason for that is because overall, they seem to be much more aesthetically attractive than these standalone pylon signs, and they're eye-level. As often is the case in the planning profession is that when you're looking at signs, and business signs along commercial corridors, if they're high, if they're high in the air and the corridor happens to have a speed limit of 40 miles per hour, if you're trying to look for a business and you're looking at those signs, you would have a tendency to slow down and start looking up, which could cause some safety issues. So, we are providing an incentive for increased signage if they opt for a monument sign as opposed to a pylon sign. Another important feature from our end would be the review of preliminary stormwater management plans. That has not been part of our preliminary review of the city's review when it comes to construction plans or preliminary plans for non-residential developments. Stormwater mitigation is becoming a big issue, especially with development. Of course, our infrastructure is very much outdated. So, every time you build and you hard-surface, that stormwater's got to run off somewhere. It usually runs off, of course, into the city's drainage system. We're recommending that they show and implement stormwater management best practices. Another big issue that we heard from our residents with regards to our neighborhood meetings are used corolla specifically, not so much new dealerships, but used corolla. What we're recommending, right now, we have no regulations with our CZO. What we're recommending is that used corolla have a separation or distance requirement of 1,000 feet. Now, if you've got two existing corolla right now, side by side, they're not going to be impacted, but if one decides to close shop or vacate, if they're vacant for 12 months, and this is consistent with our, with our non-conforming use regulations, at that point in time, they have to comply with this regulation. So, it cannot be reused as a used corolla if there's an existing one that falls within 1,000 feet. There's many other options to use a property, but they would not meet the requirements for a used corolla. In addition to the text changes, we are recommending some zoning map changes as well. Part of this study also included a citywide land use or canvassing, canvassing of the city with regards to how land is used. The primary, I guess, the, the basis that you follow in planning is that a zoning classification should follow how the land is primarily used. So, UNO and their graduate students went out there and they, they conducted a land use survey, and there are, we are recommending some zoning changes. Most notably would be along the north, Williams Boulevard, north of the I-10. From I-10 to 37th Street, you've got, it's a hodgepodge of C1 and C2 zoning along Williams. We've often got a lot of phone calls and complaints from business owners and property owners with property in C1 complaining and asking why can't they have more flexibility to use their property like the businesses and property owners that are one block over. They have a valid reason to be upset. It is a commercial corridor. The majority of the buildings that are in these C1 sections of Williams Boulevard are large enough and should be actually zoned for C2 use. There's some smaller ones, but primarily, these are larger-sized, big box, commercial developments. This is what it would look like if it were rezoned. You would have a more uniform C2 zoning classification that would extend from I-10 traveling north to Joe Yuni Boulevard. Another proposed zoning change would be the city's property located around the Laytown area. Right now, you've got a hodgepodge of zoning. That area that is considered to be Laytown really is everything north of the protection levee. You've got the parking lot for the Treasure Chesapeake Casino, which is separately zoned Laytown District, and then you've got the area where the Coconut Beach Volleyball Court is and some of the other property that is zoned general commercial. What we're recommending is a uniform Laytown zoning district classification that would allow for recreational uses along with commercial uses that would complement those recreation uses. A third location, this is former airport by our property along 32nd Street that's nestled between Lamarck Ford, the Duncan Canal, and the Espinaire Mall. At one time, this was airport redevelopment property. There was a title transfer. It obtained private ownership. Home Depot now owns the property. In fact, we have an application in by CarMax at this time to utilize the majority of this, of this property for development. It cannot be reused for residential purposes due to FAA restrictions. It can only be reused for commercial or industrial uses. We're recommending commercial C2 uses because you've got C2 to the east and C2 uses to the west. Probably the most troublesome area is the area along Veterans Boulevard between Tipton Street to the east and Richland Street to the west. You have multiple zoning classifications. You've got property that's been zoned general office since 1988. There was a major rezoning of property in Kenner in 1988. They created a GEO general office zoning classification. You do have some offices that front along Veterans Boulevard, but the area to the west, between Veterans and I-10, most of that property is used for residential purposes. It used to be zoned residential before it was zoned general office. We're recommending for those properties that front along Veterans Boulevard, a C1 zoning classification to make it more uniform as the map shows below. We're recommending that the property that's zoned, that's zoned GEO off of the corridor to the west be rezoned to R3, three and four-family residential. That is how the property is used now. And then all the way to the east where you've got property that's currently zoned C1R, that's a zoning classification that was established in 2006 to accommodate an applicant who wanted to build a hotel. The hotel was never built. Property is zoned C1R, but it's primarily used for residential purposes, with the exception of the west side of Tipton Street where you've got industrial, industrial uses. So, we're recommending that portion of Tipton to be zoned SI to be reflective of those uses, and then to the west of that, R3, to be reflective of those multi-family uses. In fact, you've got two new ones going up right now. Also, another sticking point would be property in South Kenner along Reverend Richard Wilson Drive that extends pretty much from Butler to Pollock Street. The property that's zoned C1PO in pink at the top. For all practical purposes, that's a mixed-use zoning district. It allows for C1 uses and it allows for residential uses. The problem, though, is that the majority of applications we get are for applicants wanting to build residences in those areas. They got to go through a process. It's mainly senior citizens or single parents, and they got to pay a fee, an application fee, they got to pay money for, for plans. It can be very costly. What we're recommending is that the property be renamed as mixed-use district, and as long as the applicant is meeting the regulations of the zoning district, there's no reason why that applicant has to go through a process if they want to build a residence in it. With regards to the type of uses and regulations, they're basically the same. We're also recommending, sorry, a new bachelor district, the area that's south of the Mississippi River Protection Levee. Jefferson Parish has a bachelor district, Harahan has a bachelor district, and St. Charles has two. What we're recommending is a new bachelor district that would allow uses consistent with our neighbors, and basically, you're tying in all of that bachelor area for development, basically related to maritime use. And then last, we're recommending, and this is one of the recommendations from Tulane University, is to expand the boundaries of the Rivertown Historic District. Now, we're not talking about rezoning property that falls within the boundaries. We're just talking about expanding the boundaries. This was something that the Rivertown Advisory Committee some years back recommended, as well as former council member Mark Johnston, Mark Johnson. So, those, those boundaries would extend to Jackson to the east, and I apologize. I can't make out the, to the west. I can't make out the, to the west. But anyway, it would include Kenner's, the Kenner High School building, as well as a couple of historic buildings that are located on Jackson Street that are not within the boundaries now. It's just to protect those historic buildings that are now outside of the boundaries of Rivertown. So that's basically a very summarized presentation of what we are proposing to do. The goal of, through this comprehensive resiliency program, was to be more resilient in terms of land use and zoning. It is very hard to implement our comprehensive plan with outdated, 38- or 40-year-old zoning regulations, and really, it's not fair to apply them to the citizens of the Kenner community. So Planning Commission recommended approval. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Before we open for public comment, any questions, Mr. Abear from the council?
Yeah, I have one.
Councilman Carroll, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Abear, thanks for the presentation, thanks for all the hard work. A couple of questions, and I think it's good for us to be able to allow the people, the residents, the neighbors, to be kept abreast of what's going on, for it to come to the council, and also for the proposed plans for the property owners to let everyone know what's going to go on, as opposed to finding out like in the dark. But have we set the boundaries for who has to be notified, or who has to be part of these meetings? How far does it go? Is it just on the street? Is it so many feet of the residents that have to be part of this meeting? Have we set that up?
This meeting?
No, no, we're talking about the meetings-
Talking about for putt applications?
The putt application. You say now they have to have at least one meeting to-
Do they really notice me yet?
What we're recommending is that if there's an active civic association, a neighborhood association, or homeowners association, to get with them. And of course, we can work with them to get the name of the president or vice president. If there's not, then we would recommend just getting with the neighbors. Of course, there would be a form that we will put together, almost basically a sign-in sheet, so that we've got verification that there was a meeting held, the date, the time, what the meeting was in regards to.
And I guess that's my question. What is the definition of neighbor, and how far does a neighbor exist? Is it 500 feet? Is it so many? What is that?
We're not talking about like a notification for a public hearing, like for the Planning Commission or City Council. What we're basically saying is that get with the local civic association-
If there is one.
-neighbors, regardless of where these residents live or come from, just in the immediate neighborhood. The adjacent property owners, of course. I mean, we always, what we do for notices, we send out a notice of a public hearing for everybody that falls within 250 feet.
Exactly.
They can do the same thing. And honestly, it depends on a case-by-case basis, and it depends what the application is, too.
Well, I mean, I just want to make sure that everybody is playing by the same rules, and to make sure that when people, you know, proceed with this, they understand that a neighbor is so many feet. You know, we do it for 500 feet or 300 feet or whatever. If a person gets involved to do this, and he's not really sure, he could meet with one person, a neighbor, and say, "I had a meeting," which could be his brother that lives right next door to him, as opposed to-
Yeah, we would not, we wouldn't accept that as a meeting.
So we just have to make sure that it is a legitimate, and how are we going to enforce that? Will they have to bring it to the signed documentation of the neighbors to the planning department?
Yeah, it wouldn't be a matter of enforcement. It's just a matter of verifying and showing us that there was an actual meeting that was held, or an attempt by the applicant to hold a meeting with the adjacent property owners, with the neighbors that live within the vicinity of that, to explain to them what they are proposing before they submit the application to our department.
Yeah, I mean, adjacent, I guess most people understand adjacent, but-
Those that live next to the property lines of where the subject property is located at.
Okay, and it's addressed that way within the new, our new plan here?
Yes.
Adjacent, okay. Thank you. And my next question, could you go with the historic districts again for Rivertown, the far east and the far west? I got kind of confused a little bit.
Well, far east is Jackson Avenue.
Okay, far west would be what?
The block that's just to the west of Kenner High School, and I work right there.
That's Butler or?
Yeah, I think it is Butler.
Right, okay, so Butler for the far west, and Jackson to the far east.
Yes.
And far south would be obviously-
No change there along Reverend Richard Wilson Drive, and then, but it would get, it would extend north along Williams Boulevard up to Airline. Just those adjacent properties on Williams Boulevard.
Okay. All right, sir, thanks. It's a lot of information, and I'm sure people, you know, listening along with myself, it's a lot to digest, and it's going to be, you know, a process to take this all in and to be able to answer questions as individual projects come up. So thanks again for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Klein, question for Mr. Abear?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Abear, I want to thank you for your hard work on the new code. And our code was old, it was outdated, and I believe the new code addresses the current issues as well as anticipates future issues. And I, myself, had a development recently that was up for approval in my district, and we had not one but four meetings. And before we had the first meeting, the citizens said, "We don't know anything about this." So I think notice is very important because it gives the neighborhood people, the people most at risk, and the people with the need for more knowledge, will have an opportunity to find out and discover what's going on in their neighborhood. So I think that's an excellent idea, and certainly, I think we are all in favor of the new code. We worked hard on it. And I want to ask you one other question about the recreational vehicles. Why don't you explain to the citizens a little bit more about that and what the new code covers and the old code failed to cover?
Well, starting off with what our code fails to cover, it fails to cover, it fails to define what recreational vehicles are. It does provide a definition for recreational equipment in three things. A motorized home, a pickup coach that goes onto the back of a pickup truck, and a travel trailer. Now, it does regulate. You cannot park a recreation or camping equipment beyond the front building line. It's got to be behind it. You can't park it in the front yard area. It does not address recreational vehicles at all. That's been a big issue, so we are at least addressing it. The regulations are basically the same as Jefferson Parish's. We modeled off of theirs. Same thing with recreational vehicles as being boats and RVs. You have to park them behind the front building line. Of course, you can park them in your driveway, you can park them in your backyard, just not visible from the front yard, visible from the street. And of course, you can't park it in your front yard. But look, we understand that they need time to make the adjustments, and we are recommending a one-year amortization period to come into compliance.
Okay, well, thank you. And in my district in particular, we had about six boats in front yards. And now, the new code, and tell us, the new code will prohibit that, or will give people one year in order to rectify that situation. Is that correct?
Yeah, they would not be able to park in the front yard. If they can park on the side or in the back, certainly, but they'll have to just determine what their options are, but certainly not parking in that green area in the front yard.
Correct. And under the new code, a person with a boat in their front yard between the house lawn and the sidewalk would be prohibited, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Let me just define that. It's the required front yard, which is the area between the front property line, the front building line, and between the boundaries of the two side yards. That's primarily green area, but that's the area that we're talking about, where you cannot park your boat.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone from the public wishing to address the council on item 11A? When you come forward, please give us your name and address, please.
I was hoping to remain anonymous, but my name's-
I'm sorry?
David Nelson, 2617 Illinois Avenue in Kenner. I'd like to talk to the council about this ordinance, which I recently found out about, but I know it's been in the works apparently for a while. And anyway, I'd like to say that members of the Chateau Estate Civic Group who are pushing this zoning ordinance are fortunate to have the means or own property large enough to store their boats or campers in accordance with this ordinance. However, it's totally unfair to the citizens who bought property in Driftwood, Westgate, Lincoln Park, and other subdivisions, who, without backyard access for boats or campers. In most cases like mine, there's only a side gate egress. So I wonder how you can pass this unpopular ordinance when right down the street, we have a boat launch that FEMA gave $2.6 million, from my understanding, to the city of Kenner for the Kenner residents to enjoy. You must know that many of your constituents who this impacts will be forced to sell their boats or campers because they won't have the means to afford storage. Unless I have a windfall in the next year, I won't be able to. So anyway, so I maintain as long as recreational equipment meets the guidelines of Part A, Section 6.5 of this zoning ordinance means lawful, you have a sticker on it or a plate, then you should be able to park it at least in your driveway. Okay? So I know some people would say that more people are for this proposal than against it, but I think you'd be wrong because it's unlikely that you're going to hear from us who are happy with our situation, but you're going to hear mostly from the cranky-up-type residents, like in my case, old lady who sits outside in her robe and complains and with nothing better to do. So two things I ask. I ask you that you think about the good times you've had fishing or camping, and if you insist on passing this, that you maybe have the compliance officers show some discretion with, you know, making us move our boats when we have no way to, no, we can't put them behind the front property line. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wishing to address the council on item 11A? Could you give us your name and address, ma'am, and you'll have three minutes?
Hi, my name is Angela Nelson. I live at 2617 Illinois in Kenner. I also am a resident of Kenner and have always enjoyed boating since I was a child. And we have a boat, and the unfortunate thing is, there should be some sort of exception for residents who do not have access to the backyard to park a boat. I understand there are areas that have, like the service alley, but we don't have that option. And I'm just finding out about this. So, you know, I'm really upset about it because, you know, that's our fun, our family fun, family livelihood. I just hate for it to happen. And if there's anything I could do to ask for some type of exception, you know, that's what I'm here for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on item 11A on the agenda? Seeing none, motion by Councilman DeFrances, seconded by Councilman Brennan to close public hearing. Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0.
Motion by Councilman DeFrances, seconded by Councilman Brennan to approve the legislation on item 11A. Councilman DeFrances, wish to open? No? Okay. Sure. I see no other requests to speak. I would just like to address the two members of the public. Thank you for coming out and listening to us, and, excuse me, presenting your situations to us. I just want to reiterate and make sure it's understood, the extensive process that was gone through over, how long, Mr. Abear?
Six years.
Six years. And I can speak to the number of public meetings, the advertisements. This wasn't just published on the courthouse doors. I mean, this was very well-advertised, umpteen press releases. So I just want to make sure everyone understands the extensive public notice and process that this went through. And I can tell you, of the half dozen public meetings I attended, boats, I can't think of a topic that came up more frequently. I mean, that was certainly the central, would you agree, Mr. Abear? I mean, that was a focal point of discussion, and so I'm saying, and look, I'm a boat owner. We have two or three of them. I don't know, my dad's back there, so he can tell you. But I can tell you that I'm very sensitive to that issue personally. This is not something Kenner's doing that is necessarily different than our peers. Jefferson Parish, to be frank, Jefferson Parish, Harahan, West Wego have these kinds of ordinances, actually, that are a bit more stringent than even what we're enacting. That 12-month amortization is actually at several council members' request and petition to planning and zoning to give some semblance of relief, to try and mitigate the difficulty there, to at least say, "Look, this gives time to find an alternative, possible, storage facility, things like that." But I want to make sure the public understands, this is not any different than our peers. If it is, it's actually, it might not be as stringent as some of our peers. So this definitely brings us closer to a more uniform regulation when it comes to those vehicles. Because of that, I'm supportive of it, despite that, look, nothing we do is without difficulty, but it's intended to be for the betterment of the community as a whole. And so, for those reasons, I will support this. And I also would like to thank, one of the slides showed the involvement of UNO and their planning department at the University of New Orleans that was instrumental in this entire process with both the code and the zoning side of it. In particular, the former director of planning, of the planning department at the University of New Orleans, Mr. Wendell Dufour, who is nationally recognized as one of the experts in planning and zoning, and the member of a very elite Mardi Gras club, by the way. But University of New Orleans gave the city of Kenner an opportunity to scoop him up and help him join our planning department. So we've got a first-round draft pick in our planning department. I want to thank him for his work on this and for getting this done. So with that, I'll give the floor to Councilman Brennan.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Abear, isn't, since boats seem to be a topic of this, isn't, my understanding, if it's correct, could you expand on if someone brings the boat home for the weekend? Isn't-
That's, yeah, no, that's not, we're talking about the permanent placement or parking of a boat on property, not like a weekend where you-
That would still be-
That's fine, that's not the issue, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that point, please. Thank you.
No, I don't see it. I don't see it. I don't have it. All right, that's fine. Councilman Carroll, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, I too would like to thank Mr. Nelson for coming in today, and, you know, I understand your concern and your feeling about this, about something that you've been enjoying since, you know, your early childhood. And I will say that each one of us, each one of our districts, the boating situation was not that much of a talked-about comment within District 1, but we had our other issues. So I don't think that this plan is perfect for everyone and for everybody's district. There's something that we don't really feel great about it, but overall, I think it addresses the concerns that the majority, in my opinion, of the public have. It is not, it is not perfect by any means. And the part that affects each individual family, obviously, is not anything that you are feeling good about right now, but I think overall, I think it was done fairly, in my opinion. I think there are certain things we will have to, all of us in this building that live in the city of Kenner will have to live with. And, you know, hopefully, hopefully, within the next year, yourself and other families like you, who are faced with this challenge, are able to mitigate this and to ensure that you won't be able to, that you will continue to be able to use this $1.2 million, whatever it was spent, for the residents of the city of Kenner, and hopefully, that can be accomplished. So again, thank you for coming. Some of the things in here, obviously, to repeat myself, is something we had to accept, but overall, I too will be supporting this, and hopefully, within the next year, everyone will be able to address some of their major concerns. Thank you, Mr. President.
Seeing no other requests to speak, Councilman DeFrances, you wish to close?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nelson, I can sympathize because I know we thought long and hard because we were afraid exactly of what you're talking about, those smaller properties that don't have enough space to go behind the front line of the home itself. I will tell you what someone in the district I used to represent did. There were two families, an elderly family, and they were very friendly with the people next door to them. And you know, there are spaces between the two homes, but not enough for either one to put a boat behind that property line that we talked about earlier. So what they did is they got together and they put a fence between the two homes that would open up completely, and they agreed to allow one of the families to put their boat behind it. But that was a cooperative effort that they came up with to try to, you know, to address the situation. So, that's perfectly permissible, even though it actually takes up a little bit of the property for one home and the other. But that fence allows enough space for a boat to go behind that property line we're talking about. I don't know the situation you have, but I just wanted to pass that on, that that was something that was done in our district. So again, I will also tell you, there were many, many, many meetings, I know, because most of us attended the majority of those meetings. And to be honest with you, some people did attend, they did express their opinions, but I think even more people, it might have been wise had they attended and spoke up about what they needed, what issues they thought needed to be addressed. Unfortunately, it always happens that, no matter how much you publicize it, not everybody hears about it. So again, that is a problem. But I want you to know that Mr. Abear and this council worked very hard together, they put a lot of time and effort, and believe me, none of us want to hurt anyone, but it is a difficult situation, sometimes hard decisions have to be made, so I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you. Ms. Abear, would you wish to address the...
Yes, sir. I also wanted to acknowledge and thank Mr. Tim Jackson, who's sitting to the right of me. Mr. Jackson is an AICP certified planner. His background is in zoning, he served on the New Orleans City Planning Commission, so I also wanted to thank him for all of the effort that he put into this as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Who conducted most of the meetings we went to, so, thank you. All right. I believe we have an amendment.
Yes, sir, we do. If you could, I will read it into the record, and we will try to do this one in global as well. Section 16, we'll read, that lots 16 through 21, 90A, 95A, and 100A, square 132, lots 15A and 95D, square 133, and lots 15 through 20, square 134, Veteran Heights subdivision, zoned C1R, residential commercial be classified, reclassified to C1 neighborhood commercial. Then on section 17, this will read, section 17, that lots 22 through 26, 28A, 30A, 33A, 35A, 38 through 42, 74, 75A, 79 through 81, 83A, 86A, 88A, square 132, lots 23A, 26, 27, 28A, 30A, 33A, 35A, 40A, 75 through 78, 80A, 82A, 85A, and 87A, square 133, Veteran Heights subdivision, zoned C1R residential commercial, be reclassified to R3, 3 and 4 family residential. We will insert a new section 24 that will read that lots 1 through 5, 23 and 24, square 27, lots 18 through 22, square 22, square 21, square 28, lots 13, and 17 through 22, square 20, square 19, lots 1 through 10, square 30, lots 1 through 10, square 31, lots 1 through 10, square 32, arpent 119, arpent 94, arpent 95, arpent 96, arpent 120, lot 121A, lot 121B1, lot 121C1, lot 121D1, lot 1, arpent 138, and arpent 139, square 4, and a portion of arpent 140, lots 30 through 32, square 1, and arpent 137. Old Kenner subdivisions, lots 21 through 24, and 67 through 70. Centani subdivision, a portion of arpent 1, lots 1 through 5, a portion of arpent E, and lots 11 through 14, square 4, lots 28 through 32, square 8, lots 15A, 18 through 21, 12 and 13, square 5, lots 1 and 2A, square 9, lots 12 through 16, square 6. Hanson City subdivision, lots 1 and 2, square 3, lots 29 through 33, square 1, lots 1 through 3, square 4, and lots 29 through 33, square 2. Coleman Place subdivision, lots 1 through 5, square 3, lots 31 through 34, square 1, and lots 31 through 34, square 2. Pollock Place subdivision, zoned C1PO, neighborhood commercial district planned unit development option, be reclassified to MU, mixed-use district. We will renumber accordingly. Section 25, 26, 27, and then 28 will be a new section that will read, "All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby expressly repealed and rescinded, but only insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this ordinance and no further."
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Motion by Councilman DeFrances, seconded by Councilman Brennan to approve the amendment. Seeing no discussion, councilman, please vote on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six zero on your amendment.
Seeing no further discussion. Motion by Councilman DeFrances, seconded by Councilman Brennan to approve item 11A as amended. Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six zero. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 12,012, an ordinance amending Chapter 15, Section 56A of the Kenner Code of Ordinances by adding a no-parking sign between 815 Vu Ray Drive and 817 Vu Ray Drive with the exact location of the signs to be determined by the Department of Public Works. Mr. Chairman, we've received a request for a one-meeting deferral on this item, please.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Klein, seconded by Councilman DeFrances, for a deferral of item 12A for one meeting. Okay? Seeing no discussion, councilman, please vote on the deferral. Just mark him as absent.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes five zero. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution ratifying the appointment of Virginia Williams to the City of Kenner Civil Service Board in accordance with Section 8.02A7 of the Charter of the City of Kenner.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Brennan. Seeing no discussion, councilman, please vote.
Has Councilman Reyno left the meeting completely, or will he be back?
No, no, he's...
Okay.
Do I need to explain?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, motion passes five zero. Item 13B is a resolution calling a public hearing on April 7, 2016, to determine whether the structure located at 2601 Phoenix Street in Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman DeFrances. Seeing no discussion, councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes five zero. Item 13C is a resolution calling a public hearing on May 5, 2016, to determine whether the structures located at 1007 Moisane Street, Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Brennan. Seeing no discussion, councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six zero. Item 13D is a resolution appointing the members of the Alcoholic Beverage Permit Review Committee.
Motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilman DeFrances. Seeing no discussion, councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six zero. Item 13E is a resolution authorizing temporary parking on the neutral ground of the 4100 block of East Leola Drive on Friday, March 18, 2016, and Saturday, March 19, 2016.
Motion by Councilman Empistado, seconded by Councilman Brennan. Seeing no discussion, councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six zero. Item 13F is a resolution of support of the renewal of the Kenner Discovery Health and Sciences Academy Charter and the continued expansion of the school in the City of Kenner.
Motion by Councilman Empistado, seconded by Councilman Reyno. Very briefly, I will not reiterate what we've reiterated on multiple meetings in the past, and as a point of information, all councilmen, and as well as Acting Mayor Segura, have signed on as authors of this resolution in unanimous support of the Kenner Discovery School. Yet again, we face ourselves in a precarious situation where we have received word that certain members of the Jefferson Parish School Board are not nearly as supportive of the growth and continued viability of the Kenner Discovery School as we would like them to be, and do not apparently approve of the high level of success that they have attained. So we are yet again trying to stand in unison to let the Jefferson Parish School Board know that the continued existence of the Kenner Discovery School and the growth of that school is best for the citizens of the City of Kenner, and we are yet again crying out to the Jefferson Parish School Board to step up and support that school rather than continuing to obstruct their progress, which seems to have been the pattern that unfortunately we've faced. So that is my reasoning for preparing this and supporting this resolution. Seeing no further discussion, councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six zero. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none tonight. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,013, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of tasers and taser accessories from Taser International Incorporated as a sole-source provider in the amount of $39,777.13 for the Kenner Police Department.
Motion by Councilman Klein, seconded by Councilman Brennan. Seeing no discussion, councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,014, an ordinance authorizing the purchase and installation of two automated license plate recognition systems in the amount of $31,640.80 utilizing State of Louisiana contract number 4400004772 with LA Tech LLC for the Kenner Police Department.
Motion by Councilman Reyno, seconded by Councilman DeFrances. Seeing no discussion, councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six zero. Item 15C is a resolution approving change order number two, final to the contract with Volute Incorporated dated October 8, 2014, regarding the rehabilitation of the affluent pump station project at the wastewater treatment plant number three, and to accept the contract as complete for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilman Empistado, seconded by Councilman Brennan. Seeing no discussion, councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes six zero. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance creating the Department of Emergency Management in accordance with Section 4.32 of the City of Kenner Home Rule Charter and further designating the functions of the department and the department head. Item 16B is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Accent Lawn Care Service LLC for grass-cutting services, Contract A, Smooth Cutting, in accordance with Seal Bid Number 16-6316, in an amount not to exceed $250,000 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from the Three Seas Properties Incorporated for an annual contract to supply red mud on an as-needed basis in accordance with Seal Bid Number 16-1547, in an amount not to exceed $15,000 per year for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Item 16D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Furman Trucking LLC for grass-cutting services, Contract B, Smooth Cutting, in accordance with Seal Bid Number 16-6315, in an amount not to exceed $250,000 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16E is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from KCH Services Incorporated in the amount of $169,145 to furnish a carbon adsorption system with wet hydrogen sulfide monitors and a bio-trickling filter system for the sewer lift station at Vintage Drive and Meaduck Drive in accordance with Seal Bid Number 16-6323 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16F is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Fleming Construction Company LLC in the amount of $484,356 for the Ponchartrain Center front drive improvements in accordance with Seal Bid Number 16-6322. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilman Brennan? Hold on, hold on, let me get the... Go ahead. Go ahead.
I just wanted to extend some kudos to Fire Department, Police Department, Planning, Code. As I'm sure many people are aware, there was a fire at the Applebee's recently. I had received the text that morning, or email. Spoke with Michael Pettis, who runs the Louisiana stores for Applebee's. He called me that evening just to extend his appreciation and thanks for all the departments that were involved, how quickly everything was handled, the recommendations by Code, by the inspectors. The place was operational the next day, and he gave a lot of credit to the people that responded and assisted. So thank you, everybody, or to everyone that was involved.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Reyno, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, on our consent agenda, the trustee chess is holding their crawfish boils, and they called and said that they were going to cancel the one for tomorrow due to the weather that's going to be coming in tomorrow, and they are going to try to reschedule it at a later date. So I just wanted people to know not to show up. And that's it. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Quigley, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'd appreciate if we'd let Recreation Director Ken Maricoli come to the podium. I know there was something, I think, in the consent agenda about the AVP tournament coming, and I think it'd be wise for him to give us brief information about that since people on TV can see it, maybe start planning, to want to come out to this great event.
All right. Maricoli?
Hello. As most of you know, last year, we hosted the first AVP tour event, which is, if you don't know what AVP is, it's the Association of Volleyball Professionals. It's the beach volleyball, the Pro Beach Volleyball Tour in the United States. We hosted that last year. They were very impressed, they came back again this year. The one thing that we want to really stress is, this is basically the contract year for, you know, for them. They're coming back, they're giving us the opportunity to, again, present ourselves in the best light. It is going to be April 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and that week of that there, the boat launch will be closed for a few days there. We're going to have signs out early to let them know. But this is the first event in the United States leading up to the Olympic Games. There will be a lot of Olympic hopefuls that will be at this event. It's really something that NBC will be televising this live on Sunday from the City of Kenner. So this is a really big deal for the city, and hopefully, you know, we get enough participation and people to come out so that they can continue and want to come back here for the next three to five years with this moving forward. So, we're really excited. We had a lot of good compliments last year from the AVP. We want to continue to keep that up, and getting the people out there is the main part of that. It is a free event. There is some ticket packages you can buy if you want to do that, but it is free and open to the general public. It will be, again, it will be, you know, in that same timeframe, the site will move a little bit, it'll be to the boat launch parking area, that's where the main site will be. That's where the main site will be. So there'll be a lot more, you know, hopefully, this year, we get a little bit better cooperation with, with the weather and, but if not, we, we'll be prepared by, by the relocation of the site. But it was very exciting last year. They had, again, really, really good turnout last year, so we hope to continue that this year.
Thank you. Councilman DeFrances, you have the floor.
I just wanted to mention something. When it was televised, they kept, at the top, it kept saying, "Kenner, Louisiana, Kenner, Louisiana." So we had a ton of free publicity and put this, put Kenner on the map nationwide, that everyone knew where, you know, where Kenner was located and is still located and will have the tournament this year.
Well, the, the, the thing last year was that was on NBC Sports.
Right.
So it was very limited into, you would have to have certain cable packages to, to, to watch that program. This year, it'll be on, in basically every household, it'll be on NBC. So again, we want to make sure that we're doing everything and putting our best foot forward to, to, because we're hoping for the same or more of that kind of publicity for the city.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilman Klein, you have the floor.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to say one thing. Mr. Maricoli, I'm sorry, would you tell us the dates of the event?
It, it's the Wednesday, it, the Wednesday night will actually be, and I think that's the thirteenth, the Wednesday night will be, thirteenth of April, sorry. The Wednesday night will be a celebrity volleyball match. There'll be four celebrity teams from the media, different things like that. I believe our mayor has, or Acting Mayor has, has agreed to participate. So if nothing else, we can go out and watch him play volleyball. It should be exciting. So that'll be the Wednesday night. Thursday night will be the qualifier, or Thursday all day will be the qualifier for hopefuls trying to get into the professional event. The professional event will start on Friday. It, it will be, and, and we're actually going to do something a little different. We're going to have some lights out there, so they'll play in the, in the afternoon and evening time, which a lot of the venues that they have don't, don't afford that to them. And we're going to be putting in some temporary lights to, to allow that to take place. And then the Saturday will be the, 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 the rounds, the, the, I guess, the elimination rounds, and then Sunday will be the championships.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And the last report is one I'd like to make on behalf of both myself and Acting Mayor Segur. Tomorrow and Saturday, there will be Saint Joseph's altars throughout the City of Kenner. City of Kenner's always had a tremendous participation in Saint Joseph's Day. Last year, there was a, I, I bring this up particularly because it's just another, another example of when you have elected officials, councilmen that can work together, the city benefits as a whole. There was a Saint Joseph's altar hosted in Woodlake Estates in District Five for thirty-plus years at the home of Debbie and Doug Dowzer, and for a variety of reasons, they're, they're no longer able to host it at that location any longer. Last year, as they had no home, no home to host it any longer, I reached out to what I thought was the only other Sicilian councilman in Kenner at the time, Councilman Segur, and I've learned very quickly that although he hangs out with nothing but Sicilians, he is not. But nonetheless, he graciously helped me find an alternate location, and due to his work with the Boy Scouts and Alliance Club, helped them find a home for their Saint Joseph's altar at the Glyons Club next to City Hall. So thank him for, I want to thank him for that and his cooperation and work with us. So that's tomorrow from five to nine P.M. and Saturday from eleven A.M. to seven P.M. So anyway, just wanted to make that report. Seeing no other requests, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business, and our motions to reconsider are removed from the tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Almorella first.
Almorella, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, Fifth District, forty-four years. I want to respond to some concerns by a citizen at the last council meeting concerning the District Two seat. Just to give a little background on how we got here, for a number of years under the charter that we have now, the charter restricted, limited to the two councils at large, could only serve as council president. None of the district councilmen could. And I think the reason why the charter was written like that was so each district would have their representative in the seat discussing issues, voting on issues. About six or seven years ago, maybe a little longer, referendum was put on the ballot. I opposed that referendum at the podium here, and I opposed it at the ballot box, but the people at Kenner had, they say, and they, they, they approved it. And that allowed the council district seats to serve as council president. Now, had the charter, that referendum won the pass, and we'd have two duly elected council at large right now, being as we have beyond six months before we elect a new mayor, that would have meant that both of the two councilors large would have had to serve as Acting Mayor, and it would have, and if they had the intentions of running for that seat, they wouldn't have been ineligible to run for that seat. So that's the significance of that, and that's where we got to where we are today. Now, more than likely, Councilman Empostado here will be the next Acting Mayor after this six months is over with. And I'm pretty sure since the Fifth District is the largest in the City of Kenner with the largest subdivision in that district, some of the people in the Fifth District may feel the same way. Some of them may come up in and add the same concerns that this other gentleman did. And having said that, I want to close by saying, I want to send my prayers to Ms. Margaret Bad, who was a political activist and advocated her life to good government, insisted on good government. She was co-chair, co-founder of Citizens for Good Government. She'll be sadly missed and outstanding citizen. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Ms. Windsor, Ms. Dolores Windsor?
Good evening, everyone. Dolores Windsor, fifteen twenty-one Mayfield Street, Kenner, Louisiana. I'm the president of the Lake of Manor Civics Association. I just came to thank, come to thank Mr. Gonzalez for taking care of some problems that we had back in the Lake of Manor area, and I just want to thank him, him and his workers for doing it in such a speedy time. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, very, very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I apologize, I'm having difficulty reading it. Shelley, nine thirty-nine Thirty-first Street? I'm sorry. Ms. Shelley, I, I'm having difficulty reading at nine thirty-nine Thirty-first Street. Shelley Clutch, Clotch? All right. Mr. and Ms. Kit Rowan? Yes, ma'am. Could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir.
You have three minutes.
My name is Kit Rowan, and I live at seven-one Lisa Avenue in Kenner in Driftwood Subdivision. Pardon me. What I really need your guidance with is a parking issue in our neighborhood. You know, I'm sure you're aware that Schnekkenberger School is there, and on certain streets and parts of the street, north, southeast, and west, the way they park, they insist upon blocking driveways. And we need a solution to this situation because several, several times, I've either tried to come into my driveway from coming on an errand or something, or leaving my home, and as they are parked across the driveway, they feel like they have a right to do so, and I have no right to ask them to move. They've made that very plain to me. I've called the police, I've gone to the police department, and I've gone to the codes, and I went to codes the other day, and twice, actually, say they sent me to the police, and I went back to codes, and they, the police sent me there. And so I really, please beg for you to help me with this situation, so that I, I actually had a woman confront me the other day, and just like dumbfounded me. But at any rate, she felt I had no rights in asking her not to park in my driveway because she was picking up her child from school. And I understand, the police told me that the street is a public place, but with that being said, does that make it okay to block private driveways, people passing in and out of their driveway, and blocking neighborhood streets totally? The street at Forstall in Lisa, as they have come to drive around that way, if you know where that is, they park right across the street and just about dare you to expect them to move so that you can access your own street to get to your own home. I don't know what to do about the issue. I'm, I'm just at a loss. Please help.
Well, I would encourage, I'm sure Councilman Reyno and Chief Glazer would be willing to meet with you afterwards and discuss that issue? Or would you rather address it?
No, I can address it right now. It was brought up to me last night at the, the, the meeting that we had for our Neighborhood Watch. And I did talk to a gentleman, and I said that I was going to go visit with the principal and ask if she could, you know, put a notice out to the parents that are doing the pickup. And also, we can also work with the chief as far as getting some offices there during that pickup time in the afternoon to just try to see what we can do. Chief, that's, you're good with that?
Well, they were going to come Monday, and they were there for, a policeman was there for about three to five minutes and then left. So I, I just don't know what to do. I'm just at my wits' end about this situation.
Again, I think once we talk to the principal of the school and she puts out a notice to the parents that are doing the pickup.
I did speak to the school, by the way, as well, several times, and they just say that they announce it in their parents' meeting, "Please be a good neighbor and do not block the neighbors' driveways," but that obviously hasn't, hasn't worked.
I see Chief Glazer's request to speak.
Sure. Thank you.
Is that it?
Chief Glazer's request.
We have, we have several schools in the City of Kenner that this is a problem, an ongoing problem, namely, Alexander on West Esplanade, they, the, the parents actually blocked the right lane, westbound on West, West Esplanade, where they pick up their kids. Chateau Elementary in Chateau Estates is by far the most complaints we get, because they back up all the way on northbound Chateau, down Tavel, down Meadok, and it, it is gridlocked for the residents that, that, that come and go. I've instructed the officers to, to monitor it, and if they see violations, if someone stopped in front of a driveway, to have them either move on or, or pull up. If someone, I mean, doesn't, we really don't take enforcement action if somebody kind of follows our advice to either back up or, or move on or make the block. But the situation isn't going to alleviate itself. We have asked every principal in, of these schools to get with the parents, and it, it has never, we've never come to a, I guess, a, an agreement between the parents, the school, and the police to get this traffic flowing. So, I mean, if you can talk to your, the principal in, in the district and see if she can get to the parents, I'd say, and I'm going to say it, it's sad to say, some of the parents just don't care, and those are the ones that we do take enforcement action on, but it doesn't stop the, their habits. So it, it's just, it's a problem. I mean, it, it is an ongoing problem. We've, we've even had, once or for all, has had a grant for half a year in Chateau Elementary School, they hired off-duty policemen to direct traffic. You can't direct, you can direct the traffic, but you're putting them in the same spot. It's only, we just make them block driveways a little bit quicker. So it, it is an ongoing problem. I'd like, I'll meet with you after and find out your specific problem, but I will again reach out to the principals of all the schools that we know is a constant problem and remind them to, you know, tell their parents not to block driveways.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Klein, you've asked for the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to tell that young lady that in District Four, we have a school with the same problem. And, you know, we work with the administration, we work with the Police Department, we work with other council members, the principal of the school, the parents, and of course, the neighbors. And there's no easy solution to it, but we're all working on it, and we're trying to resolve it as best we can. I don't believe we can eliminate the problem, but we can make it better, and that's what we're working toward, the entire council, the administration, and the Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Reyno? Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, I have a motion to adjourn.